The time is now 7:05 and I'm calling to order and reconvening to open session, the regular Board of Education meeting for Monday, May 7th, 2018, for Indian Prairie School District 204. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carubas?
Question mark.
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Resak?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
And we do have a quorum, and Ms. Price, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a number of board salutes today, and Ms. Peel, are you ready?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. The board salutes the 29 District 204 students who advanced at the Skills USA State Competition. Niqua Valley took a state title and had 21 national qualifiers, and Wabonzi Valley produced 14 state champions and eight national qualifiers. Additionally, Matia Valley had three students who were elected to officer positions at the state level. Congratulations to all these students for their success at the Skills USA State Championships.
Congratulations to Niqua Valley senior Jack Mayer, who was recently honored by the Naperville J.C.'s with a distinguished service award as student volunteer of the year. Jack earned the recognition for his work with best buddies and autism awareness. Many congratulations to Jack.
The board salutes Niqua Valley DECA students who placed in the top three in the world at the annual International Career Development Conference, where more than 15,000 students compete for international honors. Congratulations to seniors David Botos and Michael Chavane for achieving third place in the entrepreneurship team decision-making event. Great job, David and Michael.
And congratulations to the Matia Valley and Niqua Valley robotics teams, who recently competed at the VEX Robotics World Championships. The competition brought over 600 high schools, high school teams representing 36 countries for the chance to claim the title of best in the world. Niqua Valley had two teams, and Matia Valley had one team in the competition. Congratulations to the team and coaches for your outstanding achievements.
The board would like to salute Niqua Valley media students who earned three first-place honors at the 25th Annual Midwest Media Educators Association High School Video Festival. Those first-place awards include Matthew Thomas, Armin Nakravan, Jack Hemingway, and Maddie There were also several top-10 finishes from both Wabonzi Valley and Matia Valley. In addition, the Chicago Midwest Chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences recently announced that Naomi Keen from Niqua Valley received a Student Television Award for Excellence for her editing work. Congratulations to all our media students for these fine achievements.
Best Communities for Music Education. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation named District 204 as one of the 2018 Best Communities for Music Education. This award acknowledges schools and districts across the country for their commitment and support for music education. The selection process is based on music class participation, instruction, facilities, and overall support for the music education program. This is the seventh consecutive year our K-12 music program has received this national recognition. Congratulations to all our music teachers who provide outstanding music opportunities for our students.
May I have a second? Yep.
Steve Skorup receives two awards. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley high school teacher Steve Skorup, who was named Illinois Skills USA Advisor of the Year. Steve has been a Skills USA advisor for 25 years at Wabonzi Valley, where he teaches drafting and design and project lead-the-way courses. He was nominated for this award based on his outstanding years of Skills USA involvement. Under his guidance, Wabonzi Valley student success in Skills USA competitions includes more than 1,200 state and 40 national qualifiers, a national champion, national meddling teams, and more than 15 national top-10 place finishers. Thanks to Steve, Wabonzi Valley's program received a grant of $20,000 that his students used for the reconstruction of the early childhood playground. In addition, Skills USA students have provided almost $10,000 in food, gifts, and financial aid to Wabonzi Valley students and families in need. For these and other achievements, Steve will also be awarded the Paul Harris Fellow Award by the Rotary Club of Naperville later this week. Congratulations, Steve, and thank you for your many years of dedicated service to the students in our district.
Thank you, everyone.
Wait, I had one more.
Okay.
I saved the hardest for last, I think. So, students from Wabonzi Valley took home a total of seven gold medals during the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Leadership Conference held in Springfield. Gold medal, gold medal winners are Amma Sharif, Huda Kadri, Saima Sotana, Samantha Wang, Ria Tricca, Haley Kruger, Trupti Saigal. Three students won Best in Category Awards. The honorees were Samantha Wang, Palik Miglani, and Ramya Shu, blew the last one, Ramya Shamugam. Congratulations to the students and teachers who did an outstanding job in this year's competition. Did you do this to me on purpose?
No, thank you. It's now time for our student representative reports from Matia Valley High School. It's Alexa Jordan, and her replacement, is she here? Jo Bell Murray, I think. Hi, Jo.
Welcome.
Hi, Alexa. Alexa, before you begin.
Yes.
I, you're graduating, right?
Huh?
You're graduating.
Yes, I am graduating.
Yes, and I kind of know where you're going to college. Why don't you tell everyone where you're going to college?
I will be attending Harvard in the fall.
Ooh!
Congratulations. Thank you.
And what do you think you'll be studying?
So, I applied under the major of social studies, but I was in between government and social studies when I applied, so we'll see how that goes, but I'm really excited.
Go for government.
I think so, too, actually.
No pressure.
And make the world great again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, good evening. It was so great. Thank you, thank you so much. It's an honor, and I was a little surprised, too. But, like you said, my name's Alexa Jordan, and I am the Class of 2018 Representative for Matia Valley Student Government. And as you heard, I will not actually be giving the student report tonight, but I would like to, it's my honor and pleasure to introduce to you our incoming Senior Class President, Jo Bell Murray. So, take your leave, Jo. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jo Bell Murray, and I'm the Class President for the Class of 2019 at Matia. I'm very excited to join you tonight and take over for Alexa next year. So, student government has been up to a lot lately. On April 25th, members of our student government attended We Day at Allstate Arena. The We organization puts on the event every single year to inspire the future leaders of America in their service efforts. This year was especially significant because we had one of our very own student leaders, freshman Leland Pan, speak about the importance of servants in front of thousands of people. Matia was even recognized as a spotlight school because of its commitment to community service. Prom, prom season's upon us. Last weekend, on Friday, April 27th, Matia had a royal ball at prom. I'd like to recognize the MV Math Team for going to state this past weekend at the University of Illinois. This is their second year in a row. Congratulations to their Captain Senior Neil Ready and Hari Balachandran for leading us there. As mentioned, I'd also like to recognize the MV Robotics Team for attending the world competition in Louisville, Kentucky, recently. This past weekend, Matia's theater program brought yet another incredible production to the community by putting on the play "Our Town" under the direction of teacher Matt Wolfski. Mental Health Week. In other news, Matia's newly-formed Social Emotional Learning Committee hosted a successful Mental Health Week last week, prompting healthy discussions and providing a safe environment to have them. The newly-formed SEL Committee will continue to foster student-to-student relations and offer peer mentorship in the upcoming school year. Matia would like to recognize Varsity Boys Water Polo for their five-game win streak. They're heading to playoffs later this week under the leadership of their captain and athlete, athlete of the month, junior Colin Chesney. Varsity Boys Volleyball has also had a great season so far, with a three-game lead leading up to conference play. Senior Andrew Kohut has had a large role in this, averaging almost 10 kills a game. He's repeatedly helped take down top-level competition and led his team to victory. Andrew will be continuing his academic and athletic career in the fall at Belmont Abbey College. Varsity Girls Batminton has done really well this season as well. Last weekend at the DVC Championships, they placed fifth in singles, second in doubles, and fourth overall in conference. The team placed third at the Naperville North Sectionals Thursday with some state qualifiers. Later this month, Priscilla Nukasani in singles, and Nitia Natrajin and Michelle Liang in doubles will head to state. That's all I have for the May Board Report. Thanks, everyone, and as always, go, go Mustangs.
Thanks, Jo. Good luck. Alexa. Thank you, Alexa.
Kathy, she breezed through her names.
One day, one day.
One day. I couldn't do it either, so.
It's now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board member, members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by the administrator as appropriate, and our first speaker is Sally Glavin. Welcome, Sally.
Hello, how are you?
Hi.
You ready?
You're ready? Yep, thank you.
Okay. As the 2017-18 school year winds down and planning for the 2018-19 school year is practically cemented, I just want to take this opportunity to remind the board and administration that there is a serious classroom overcrowding in the district that continues to be ignored. All levels are experiencing overcrowded classrooms. Students, parents, and teachers have all expressed concerns and provided administration and this board with very real examples of the perils of allowing ballooning class sizes. In some cases, class sizes have even been allowed to exceed teacher contract limits, and I'm not a lawyer, but I truly don't get that one. The only acknowledgement I've ever gotten is that class sizes are monitored. However, if there are 42 students in a math class or 34 in a fifth-grade class, monitoring is hardly an acceptable response. These kids' school year is almost over, but I expect that the monitoring response will no longer be viewed as a valid one to a very real problem. The Brooks and Brookdale parents let you know in no uncertain terms the negative environment their students were subject to this year, and monitoring did nothing for them. Action is what is needed, and the board really needs to start demanding that action be taken. I have heard on several occasions that some on the board feel that the district is borrowing against school buildings by not keeping up with the suggested maintenance and necessary capital improvements. Two meetings ago, the administration was asked to include such costs in the budget to get a more realistic financial picture of where the district is at. While, of course, our buildings are important, I am dismayed that no one thought to mention that the district is really borrowing against our students' educational needs when we fail year after year to provide the kids with a decent-sized classroom in which to learn. I challenge the board to direct the administration to come up with a plan to start chipping away at this issue. Where can funds be moved from in order to hire more teachers and to get, to get more teachers in front of our students? Are there funds to go on a mass hiring spree and hire 40, 50 teachers? Okay, probably not. But, where is the planning by the district to start addressing this issue? The district planned for elementary school air conditioning and the introduction of Chromebooks in a piecemeal way. Why can't the district start planning for additional teachers in the same manner? Start with math and science teachers, or start with primary grade teachers, but for goodness sake, start somewhere. I've been before you for three years, and the issue has not only continually been ignored, it's been allowed to get worse. One way to better use taxpayer money is to eliminate the STEM school for 204 and non-204 students and use those funds to improve the daily education of only 204 students. We have a lot of kids in need throughout our district, and we simply should not be funding the education of non-204 kids. I personally didn't have any children in the schools this year, and I won't next year either, but I can assure you I will still be here for future meetings, and I look forward to standing up here to tell you that my FOIA show no outrageously large class sizes. I hope that time comes soon, but if not, well, it's only the students that are being hurt, so let's get a plan in place and work to provide the kids with the best learning environment that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. And our second speaker is Janine McDonough.
Welcome.
Hi, Janine.
I think you know me, but my name's Janine McDonough, and you know that I have a son at STEPS, right? And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I haven't been up here in a while, although I have sent many emails in the last eight months or so, right? So first, I want to thank Principal McBride and Principal Stip for notifying STEPS families about the incidents that occurred at each of these schools this past week. We're happy to see that the STEPS families are finally being included in these notifications. And it is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I want to make sure that I thank the STEPS staff that work with our young adults every day. The STEPS staff has been the glue that has held everything together. They are there each and every day to teach our kids, to give them a high five, to be role models to them, and to be a friendly face in a year that's been difficult for all of us. Thank you to the STEPS staff. We appreciate for all that you do. As you know, parents have been voicing their concerns and advocating for changes for the STEPS location and program for over a year now. We have written letters, attended and spoke at board meetings, attended every engaged before meeting, and had one-on-one conversations. Some of you have spent many hours speaking with us. I want to thank those that have taken the time to listen and understand the issues and our concerns. While we see some positive changes in the last 13 months, there are still numerous issues that need to be addressed. We are hopeful that the decision to hire a new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services and principal position for the STEPS program is a step in the right direction. As a parent and president of the STEPS PTSA, I'd like to welcome these individuals to our district. I look forward to the opportunity to meet them, and I'm hopeful that they'll be able to work together to solve the problems and concerns of the STEPS program. I'm confident that if we work together, STEPS can, can become an innovative, up-to-date transition program that will meet the needs of every student, STEPS student in our district. So, I think they start July 1st. Is it okay if I contact them July 2nd to introduce myself? I'm kidding. Maybe I'll give them a week. So, all kidding aside, I'm optimistic for the future direction of the STEPS transition program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. As someone who's new to this process, is, am I able to pose a question, or was I supposed to register somewhere?
Are you supposed to sign in?
Yes, the process, in the process, we feel that there's a sign-up prior to the meeting.
Was that online or in the front?
It was right in the front. And then, you have the opportunity to speak. At this point, in terms of a plane of order, it's too late to do that.
Even though 30 minutes was allotted and...
Yes, that's correct. Okay, thank you. We encourage you to come to our next meeting, and if you want to provide feedback, we're always ready to take that.
And when is the next meeting, please?
May 21st, yes.
May 21st.
She can also email the board at any point.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. We now move to the Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. We begin with the Superintendent Report.
Okay, I will start by reminding everyone that Saturday, May 19th, is the 32nd Annual Fine Arts Festival hosted at all three of our high schools. The talent on display, whether it's through art, vocal music, or instrumental music, is always amazing, so I encourage the community to stop, drop in anytime between 9:00 and 4:00. This annual event festival showcases the talents of our students throughout the district. It features more than 80 musical performances and more than 12,000 pieces of artwork, including 3D works, ceramics, computer imagery, and more. The Fine Arts Festival is free, open to the public. It is, this event is funded by the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation with additional support through a grant from the city of Naperville. And as already previewed, I think, in one of our salutes, I will be at each of the high schools to receive the National Association of Music Merchants Best Community for Music Education Award for the seventh time in a row, is what I think Susan said. A detailed schedule of all the performances are on our website. And as also previewed by someone, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. Janine previewed that for us. And so while I know we value and appreciate our teachers and support staff every week of the year, this is a special week to recognize our teachers for their incredible contributions. We have a very talented staff that deserve high accolades for what they do every day for our students, so I want to say thank you to all of our amazing teachers and staff in our district, and I hope that all of you will find some time this week to thank a teacher. And, Janine, if you'll just turn around, we have one administrative position on the agenda tonight, and it is for our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. This position does begin July 1st, so we are pleased to bring forward, so Christina, I'll ask you to stand. We are pleased to bring former Dr. Christina Cepel for this position. Christina comes to us most recently from Community Consolidated School District 181, where she serves in a similar position. She has an extensive background in special education, is a teacher, administrator, and attorney, and we're very excited to recommend Dr. Christina Cepel for your approval to the position of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
And with that, I need motion to approve.
I move to approve, or I move that the Board of Education approve Dr. Christina Cepel as the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services as presented.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll. Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome.
Welcome, Christina. We are very excited to have you join us in July.
Okay, and now we move to, to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items E through J as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items E through J as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now go to our action item, which is the approval of Facility Management and Supply And do I have a motion?
I move that the Board, Board of Education approve the Facility Management and Supply Services bid as presented.
Second.
Mr. DePaul.
Happy birthday, Mr. DePaul.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. You're spending it with all of us.
Absolutely. Should put that on the agenda. Mr. President, board members, Dr. Sullivan, tonight, we bring to you a recommendation for the approval of the Facility Management and Supply Services bid. As you are aware, this bid is for a single-source vendor to provide management personnel, production personnel, custodial equipment and supplies for performing custodial maintenance grounds, in-district and US mail processing, warehousing, and cargo move services for the district. Also, on February 23rd, we, we originally opened bids for this service. Unfortunately, the bid amounts were over budget, and on March 19th, the school board rejected all bids and authorized the administration to rebid after reducing the scope to bring this cost back within budget. We did so, making eight reductions in the scope of service. Some of those included night custodial personnel, management staff, contractors, clerical support staff, as well as adding money to the project so that our starting salaries were back in par with our neighboring school districts. We had three contractors attend the mandatory pre-bid meeting for the rebid. Two bids were received. We had scope review meetings with both contractors. During this review process, one bid was determined to be not responsive, and the school district is rejecting that bid. We do have, the remaining bid is from Aramark Management Services and Limited Partnership. That bid is within our budget. This is a three-year contract with the district's option to renew for an additional two years. So this time, do you have any questions?
Questions? I, I just want to thank you for your due diligence in this manner. I also want to thank you for being transparent in terms of the scope of services. It's clear that the first bid that we received was way over our budget, and we could not meet that demand, and, and now we have to cut services. So, we reluctantly do that in order to get a bid that fits within our budget. If, by chance, money drops from the sky, what might happen next?
We, we would evaluate the service being provided annually based on available monies and, and make adjustments as, as we can and as necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now move to our discussion portion. I think Todd's staying here.
Yes.
Join...
Joining, yeah, joining me is Alyssa Fee from IMEG. She, Alyssa's our structural engineer, and as you recall, was...
Okay, so let me tell everyone what we're discussing. We're discussing the Fisher wall investigation and repair. Go to town. Or fix the wall.
So, we're here to give you an update tonight based, last time we reported this in February. I jumped ahead here a few slides just to, to update or remind people about what we're talking about. On the Fisher floor plan, door number five is where the initial reports of binding were reported. This is the west side of the building. We have the large west parking lot there along Eola Road. We also found cracks in the non-weight-bearing perpendicular walls that separated custodial closet, the stairwell, and these two storerooms in here. So, these are the perpendicular walls. We have two weight-bearing walls here, this one being the exterior, and another wall that is weight-bearing that serves for one of the corridor walls behind the locker rooms. So this was where our initial issues were developed or identified, and we did various troubleshooting and exploration here to see what the extent of it. During this process, we were also made aware of settlement in the slab on the other side of the building, predominantly in this science room here, 144, and there was thought to be something in room 143, too, also reported. And there was thought to be something in room 143, too, also reported. So, again, doing some troubleshooting here to identify what these problems are. And now I'll turn it over to Alyssa, who can update you on what has happened since our February 5th update, and what our next steps are. Alyssa?
Hi, thank you. Again, my name is Alyssa Fee. I'm a senior structural engineer with IMEG. So, since our last meeting, we've continued to focus on the foundations as being the potential issue with the exterior wall and the non-load-bearing walls inside the building. So we took some new soil borings at doors four, five, and six, one at each door, to see, is there an issue with the soil at the footing elevation? Nothing was found, the bearing capacity of the soil was acceptable. We did find quite a bit of stone material, but we were starting to, and you'll see that stone material is going to start to appear more and more in our discussions. But that, we were expecting a little bit of stone material, but the amount was perhaps a little bit more than normal. So from there, we continued focusing again on the foundations, digging out trenches along stores four, five, and six, actually removing the stoop at door five. We felt like we couldn't see the, unfortunately with anything with foundations, you can't see the issue below grade, so we had to dig out and remove the stoop in order to see the foundation wall, just to verify that there were no cracks developing in that wall. That did not find any cracks in the foundation wall, which was good news, kind of going along with what we had been seeing. We knew that the wall had been moving, but we just couldn't tell exactly where, where the problem was stemming from. From there, we did actually perform some more surveys. We came back out, did a visual survey of the cracks, did find that some of them had grown a little bit more. As you know, we did shore the exterior wall back in February, so that, excuse me, so that we could verify, you know, make sure the wall wasn't going to move. The cracks we saw were slightly, getting slightly bigger and moving, mostly focusing again on the non-load-bearing walls of the janitor's closet. The janitor's closet, the stairwell wall, and also the storage rooms. So, we did another laser survey of the exterior wall to see, did that move? We had done a first one before we had shored the wall, and we did another one. What we found was slight movement, again, that could have been before we shored the wall, that that happened, about a quarter of an inch of movement, and the wall had been showing as being bowing out in the middle. And that plays into one of the reasons that, as we moved down, what we came as our final conclusion, or conclusion as to right now, what's happening. So this past couple weeks, we have actually opened up the slab, going back to the sketch in there. Here are some pictures. We've actually removed the slab on grade in the janitor's closet and in the vestibule. Before we started that, though, we took cores. We were, when we removed the mop basin in the janitor's closet, we noticed that there was a gap between the bottom of the slab and the stone granular fill. This was significant because our, the initial thought, the initial problem happened in the non-load-bearing walls. Those walls sit directly on that slab on grade. And we kind of thought, okay, is that settling somehow? We weren't seeing specific drops in the slab, slight drops, but we weren't seeing anything significant. But in removing the mop basin, we could definitely see that there was a big gap. So before we removed the slab, we actually did cores. We did roughly four cores, two in the janitor's closet, two in the vestibule, and we measured gaps of three-quarters to an inch, which is pretty significant. The granular material that you see in this photograph is not the typical granular material we put under a slab on grade. We typically use what's called a CA6, which is a mixture that has large stone and small stone, so that as you're compacting it, you fill in any voids. The mixture that we're seeing here is more of a CA7, which is a three-quarter inch stone, and it's minus those fines. So what happened was, in the 30-year history of the building, as the, that stone material started to shift around a little bit, things move, we do expect settlement in buildings. Normal settlement is between half inch to an inch, and that need geotech will tell you. That stone just started to move a little bit, and it moved quite a bit because we actually had roughly three to four feet of that stone material. It probably actually goes down to the footing. We dug out about two and a half to three feet along the sides, still wanting to make sure nothing was happening with the foundation wall, but just to getting an idea of the amount of stone mixture that we were finding. So we found three to four feet of this mixture, and what we believe happened is, over the course of the years, it started to move, separated from the slab. The slab spanned it, you know, because we do build in some redundancy into the buildings. Slab spanned it for as long as it could, and then it started to sink. As it started to sink, it moved the non-load-bearing walls and started to push on that exterior wall. That caused that bowing that I mentioned in the first, that we noticed in the survey, to happen. So, right now, we're theorizing that that's what's happening to the walls, causing the cracks, causing the doors to not be able to open. In addition, it kind of goes along with knowing we have the issue in the science room. That slab had settled at the very corner of the room, roughly about, a little bit over an inch, which is not normal. You could actually roll a pencil, and it would roll downhill. This past Saturday, we took five or six cores, six cores, five in room 144, and one in room 143. In the areas where the slab had definitely settled, you could, that you could see it dropped, the slab was sitting directly on top of the stone material, there was no gaps. But at the breakpoint where it was, you know, before it started to move down, there was small gaps that we saw in between the bottom of the slab and the stone material. So, it kind of goes along with, what we've discovered since then, is that they did backfill with mostly this CA7 material. Again, it's not really what's recommended, and you can't properly compact it per ASTM specifications. However, at the time, that was a decision that was made. So now, on to the fixes. Because now that we've kind of come up with a conclusion as to what happened, we can move on to the fix. So the slab on grade in the janitor's closet and the vestibule was replaced, and is back, was replaced, I think, a week ago, one week ago. And so I think the students will be able to eventually use that door shortly, use door five again shortly. We're not going to replace the masonry wall yet until the rest of the fixes are in place, so I think we'll build a temporary wall. The solution is to come in and what we call mudjacking underneath the slab, where they put, they drill pilot holes in the slab on grade, and they pump a flowable grout, and that will fill in those voids in between the slab and the granular material. Our purpose is not to raise the slab back up to any previous level, but just to stabilize it, so there's no further movement. We will do that both in the storage rooms, janitor's closet and vestibule on the west side of the building, and then on the east side of the building in room 144. We will do that in the areas towards where that breakpoint was starting to happen, just again to stabilize the slab. We're not going to raise where it was deflected, we'll leave that as is. In the science rooms after that, we can come in with a leveling top, leveling compound, level out the slab, and replace the, or put back the casework so that the chairs aren't rolling downhill. And then in, on the west side of the building, we'll replace the masonry wall, the janitor's closet, and one of the masonry walls of the, that was severely damaged in the stairwell, we will go ahead and replace them. We'll detail it so that there are gaps on the sides and at the top of the wall, so that any movement does not eventually push on to something where it's not supposed to go. These are non-load-bearing walls, they're not meant to be rigid, tied in, and that's part of what caused, you know, the failure to be the way it was. And then, and that's basically the solution. Do you want to emphasize, it is safe for students. We still have the wall shored on the exterior, we'll remove that once the non-load-bearing walls are rebuilt, so we'll keep that in place until the slab is fixed.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
What did you say the material again, that they used, something seven, what was it, CA?
CA7.
Seven, okay.
Yep, it's from, it's an I dot standard for the specification for granular material. It has to do with the gradation of the material.
That's what they used on this wall, correct?
That's what they used, we believe, underneath the entire slab on grade, in the building.
So, here's my question to you, Todd. Did you look at, did you go back and look at when this was built, and the contractor who did the masonry work on this, and see if we contracted them and they used the same material? I mean, is there something, because if they were historically using this material that didn't have those finer granular materials in there, we could be experiencing this again, and maybe we could get ahead of it at some of the buildings, that we may have used the same contractor, or they may have used the same material. I don't know if you've had that opportunity yet, but just-
We really haven't gone back and looked at all of our buildings. At this point, this building is in 25 years old. This was built by a contractor that did not do a lot of our buildings. Looking back at the geotech, we didn't find anything out of the ordinary that the contractor did or did not do. This was a common practice at one time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 30 years ago, that wouldn't have been an issue, and the stone that they're using is a cheaper material. Also would add that this area was noted in the geotech to have, to be, have required overexcavation, so they probably did need to use more of the stone material in this building than they did in other buildings. The footings are down at minus five feet below grade, which is not typical. Typical is usually 42 inches to get below frost. So, evidence between those two things, you know that this was an unusual site as well, that they had to overexcavate, and so they may have had to remove the poor soil and just filled it with a different material, that's CA7.
How do we know if some of the other exterior walls don't start having the same issue then, are we worried about that?
That's a good question. I think this was, the, caused the exterior wall was really because you had the non-load-bearing walls that were starting to shift. They kind of bridged between, you have two walls that are load-bearing, the one on the exterior, the one along the corridor. You had a masonry wall that was kind of bridging between those two for a while as the slab was moving. Eventually, it just, the, it's a non-reinforced wall, so eventually the grout just gave, gave way, pushing on the exterior wall. The other building walls are not all masonry walls, we tend to use masonry walls in your most traveled areas, and, or use them as your, as your load-bearing walls. So in terms of the other classrooms, I believe most of those walls are drywall, and so I would not expect the same issue of pushing on the exterior wall. That's not to say we won't find other areas of the slab on grade that could potentially settle. Unfortunately, you know, at 30 years old, you would have expected it to have all happened by now, but it's tough to say if it's, if it's all completely taking care of itself.
We've also done building surveys, looking at the exterior walls around the building. Periodically, we will continue to do that, probably three months, six months period, just to make sure nothing else is occurring.
With the exception of some water in the walls, which we're going to be fixing with some tuckpointing, the walls actually, for the type of stack bond masonry, which is the evil word that we use, it's in pretty good shape.
It's encouraging that we finally found what the problem was, and we have a solution. So in prior meetings, we were searching, searching, searching. We've got a problem, it's never good to find the problem, but at least we've got one and we can address it, and the solution is measurable. So that's, you know, that's the first thing I, thank you, that's encouraging. My concern, that we've kind of already addressed, is looking at the next steps, I think we need to expand that to the other schools. We did, this, this building is 25 years old, and we constructed a lot of our buildings around the same time, and we've gotten to the point here where we are notified of the slab movement. I think we need to move to a point of investigating for some slab movement, so that we don't have to wait for the walls to be bowed, and the extra cost of that. So I think, I know we're solving the immediate problem, it's reactive, but considering the history of our district, I think we need to expand the scope of our investigation of our next steps to branch out beyond this school. That's it.
Agreed.
Susan?
I had had the same concerns that Kathy did, and I just-
Susan, do you want to put your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had had the same concerns that Kathy, had the same question that Kathy had. And Todd, you mentioned doing some research to ensure, my concern as far as Fisher is just trying to ensure the other areas of the, of the school, that we can address it proactively, as Justin mentioned, on other schools, but specifically since the concerns have already happened with Fisher, just trying to make sure that we can, can look at the, the rest of the, you know, the rest of the building to ensure we can find anything happening, if so.
Sure. We'll do that, this school and investigate eight others. I think, too, this was, as Alyssa said, an unusual site, but we'll, we'll check out all of our buildings.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Todd.
Thank you.
We now move to our board discussion on proposed Illinois Association of School Board Resolutions. As a note here, the Illinois Association of School Boards generally holds a convention on, in November, to conduct annual business. One of the things that it does during this meeting is draft resolutions, make amendments to existing position statements, or reaffirm position statements or belief systems. They do that in order that they have a legislative agenda. IASB asks each school board to propose and submit resolutions if they feel it's necessary. The submission deadline is June 20th, 2018. We're probably past the point where we should be, but we still have time to submit a resolution. I asked members if they had something to consider or submit. Three members replied back to me, so I'm going to briefly turn it over to them. I don't think anyone's at the point of having a resolution at this point, but they have suggestions and/or ideas or concepts. So I'm going to start with Mark, and in your packets, in your purple folder, Mark provided some background information in terms of tax increment financing and a possible resolution. So Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Yeah, as Mike said, we have until June 20th to either submit a new resolution, an amendment to a position statement that already exists, a reaffirmation or a belief statement, which gives us tonight to discuss, we have a May 21st meeting, and also a June 11th meeting. So we do have two meetings after this. I provided two documents for you. I will say that this has been on my mind for a long time, but especially after quite a few of us went to the Chamber breakfast, and, and, or was it the Development Partnership? Chamber. Chamber. Well, chamber, chamber lunch. And we heard the Naperville Assessor talk and two of our legislators. And Lori Donahue came up to me afterwards and she said, you know, we should think about doing that. I'm like, you, you're right. We should. We should look and see what exists. So what I provided you with, the first two-page document, I'm actually going to direct your attention to the second page first. I put in there currently the two current provision statements that talk about TIFs that IASB has. And you can take a look at those, but it, it addresses, you know, come up with things like better, better terms for what blighted means and a few other things. Yeah, I outlined it on my other page here. Procedures around TIF areas, that there should be a TIF joint review board. But I'll, I'll let you read through that. And then there's the second one that talks about IASB doesn't, doesn't agree with extending the TIF after 23 years because they can extend it an additional 12 years after that, I believe, to make it 35 years. So that is what exists currently within IASB. The last area on there, under new education funding formula. When they changed the funding formula in Illinois, they decided to create a TIF task force. And all the education groups in the state, if you will, had to present what their feelings were on TIFs. And I was talking to IASB, the Government Relations Board, and that's the second document you see, the positions of some of the groups that we belong to, like LEND, like Luda, Ed Redd, their feelings and positions on TIFs in the state, okay? So then finally, after gathering all that information, I decided to, as best I could, on the first page of this document, the two-page document, is put in some facts there for you. And let me first start with saying that, that TIFs can be a good thing, right? I don't want to, to paint them out as, as a bad thing because TIFs can definitely help municipalities and cities do wonderful things for their area, especially areas that have been blighted or, or don't have a lot of business and they need to, to re-energize that. But the fact of the matter is, in most cases, TIFs hurt school districts because that is less revenue, local revenue that school districts receive. And in many cases, after a 23, 23-year TIF is created, they go out and get a 12-year extension, which makes it 35 years. Right now, there are 1,300 tax increment finance districts in Illinois, 1,300. Just to give you an idea, Chicago has close to 500 TIF districts. CPS has $6.6 billion locked up in TIFs. The state as a whole has about $13 billion. So you can see with Chicago being, CPS being close to 6.7, that's a lot of money. If all TIFs were to end, let's just say school districts would be a lot better off. Give you an idea, that's $6.6 billion at CPS alone. If that didn't exist, CPS would have $19,000 per student more to spend if it wasn't wrapped up in TIFs. Just to give you an idea. In the collar counties, if we got rid of our TIFs in the collar counties, we would have $1,800 more to spend per student. So that gives you a comparison of how much CPS would have and how much our state would have. You know, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to paint Chicago, but they do have a lot of TIFs. So the whole point of this is, is that where I started to have my concerns is that when TIFs reduce school districts, how much their overall property wealth is? Because when you have a TIF district, it's less, it's money taken away from the equalized assessed value. So you appear to have, have less money as a school district. And therefore, the state gives you a subsidy to make up for that lost revenue that's included in a TIF. Historically, school districts have been against TIFs because it takes money away from their area. But they get a subsidy from the state. Well, the way the new education funding formula works is that that is less revenue recognized in your area. So, so what I'm afraid of is school districts learning how to game and to play the system by saying, okay, create TIFs. Because, you know, we don't really have a say in it anyway because it's the municipalities that ultimately make the decision. So if they're going to take away money from us, at least we'll look like we appear to have less revenue and will continually receive a subsidy from the state. So I'm afraid this could go a totally opposite direction than the state has even recognized. So, you know, I wanted to present this information to you guys. If there's anything that you want to talk about or discuss, but, you know, it's, it's, we all know it's bad enough that our state funds public education, the, pretty much the worst in the country. On average, about 24% of, 24% only goes to public schools. 65% is coming from local revenue on average. But, you know, this, this TIF thing, I think, while I'm happy it's being looked at by the, by this new task force, I feel that some of the provision statements maybe either weren't strong enough or maybe we might want to think about strengthening them or reaffirming them or amending them. So at that, I'll leave it to discussion. If you guys wanted to take time and read over this and get back to me, and I can compile some of those thoughts and then we can have that conversation at the next school board meeting.
Any initial thoughts?
I see that Illinois Association of School Boards reaffirmed their two positions on TIFs in 2016. So they, the issue gets before them and they're dealing with it. They haven't changed them in a significantly long time. That 2.33 position was adopted in 1986, changed in 1990. So I, I think it's before the association. The question that I would have is that, is this something where we want to spend our political capital in trying to make change? Do we feel we're going to make a difference in this by having a resolution?
Well, the way, the conversation I had with the, the government, the IASB governmental person that deals actually specifically with TIFs, Deanna Sullivan, she, she said to me that, remember that IASB takes direction from their boards. In other words, we don't take direction from them in this matter. They take direction from us. So, you know, I, I, I personally feel it's an issue. I don't know if, 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 if we as a board feel that what's outlined there, maybe in 2.33 especially, is, is good enough. We just leave it as is. Again, to your point, Justin, is it going to really create any political push or clout? No, not necessarily. Do, you know, I mean, that's, that, all these provisions do essentially is give our IASB lawyers, as you know, positions to stand on. But that doesn't necessarily make that much of a difference at the end of the day to our, our general assembly. So, you know, I, I just thought if, if we wanted to get any stronger on the language or more detailed on the language, you know, I just thought I'd, I'd bring it up. If, if we don't, you know, I'm fine either way, so.
I'm supportive of looking at a resolution that tries to, you know, that's in the best interest of our district. I think that's what we advocate for. We use the association through those means. So I support doing so. And I, I think these can be improved and these, we can keep these and have another one. It's good to tell the, it's good for the association to have position statements. So as legislation gets proposed, they know where all the boards stand generally. So I, there's benefits to that. So I could support some.
Well, and the way I approach this is, in our district, we haven't had many TIFs. A couple have come before us in, in the 20 years that I've lived in our district. But, but really the way I approached it is that for every, for every TIF dollar that's given as a subsidy from the state of Illinois, that's one less dollar that would have come to all the school districts, right? When you think about it. Because that, that's money that districts should have had. And with TIFs in an area, when 65% of people's property tax bills are going to the school and then these TIFs happen and that 65% is taken away from school districts and we virtually don't have a say in it unless the municipality wants to include us in their decision-making process. You know, that's, to me, it's a, it's, it's not necessarily a two or four issue to me. It's a, it's a state issue because I look at any TIF dollar that's given at the state as a subsidy is one less dollar another district would have had.
Lori?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, so listening to the different discussions recently. I mean, we had Aurora in here talking about their TIF, right? And then we went to the chamber meeting and listening to that. I mean, that's an extremely impactful subject for, for school districts statewide. And I wasn't aware or I didn't know what IASB's position was or what they advocated. So thanks, Mark, for digging all this up. And, you know, I, I haven't read 2.33 carefully to read that. But the, the second one is whatever, you know, we don't want it to be beyond 23 years. I mean, that's whatever. I mean, I, I, I don't see that as extremely impact. I mean, I understand the ramifications of that. But what, what we were talking about is trying to have IASB take a position that school districts should be involved in the decision-making around TIFs. And, you know, it says in here, joint review board or whatever. It's kind of soft. I mean, and, and, you know, IASB should advocate for what the, what impacts the school districts. And this is definitely a huge impact. And, and some groups are gaming it, right? You, you heard how many districts have had this happen and getting state funding, you know, the city of Chicago or whatever. So it's like, I, I really think that this is a problem area and that we should advocate for what is impactful to us.
I agree with that. I mean, as we sat here with the city of Aurora a few meetings back, that was nice of them to do that and to inform us. But the reality is, we didn't have a say. So I agree with you. I think if we can put up some kind of a resolution that maybe IASB supports school boards having that kind of, at least a voice in the, in the process. I think, again, that would benefit all, all school districts.
I have a question for you, Mark.
Yeah.
Because there was a bill going forward, something that, that's saying for the school districts to have a say. And it, did Deanna speak to that as far as IASB was, were they able to advocate for that or not under with the current resolutions that we have?
We did talk about that briefly. We didn't discuss any previous or pending legislation that's on the table as far as other taxing bodies having a say in the TIFs. But what Deanna did express to me is that she feels that our boards of education in the state of Illinois would overwhelmingly support making something like that joint review board mandatory. She said, we will have a problem fighting for that because municipalities don't want to give up that right that they have of making that decision. Because while they're only getting, you know, 10% of property, if you look at our property tax bill, 10% is going to the city. They want all that money because that money is helping them. That's extra revenue that they have to redevelop an area or put money into an area that they feel needs it. So then you have to say, well, okay, so if you're not going to give up that right, then, you know, back, back to 2.33, do we better need to define what blighted is, you know? So she said it would be difficult, but she said that we could make the language a little stronger if we wanted to. But she was a cool advisory.
I, I guess, I was just trying to clarify. I got my head wrapped around TIFs a while ago, when, when, when the funding started cutting, getting from our district. But if, if they didn't feel empowered to support that passed legislation based on our current resolutions, I am definitely thinking we need to, you know, be a little bit clearer with our, with a resolution about tax increment financing. I think that's a great idea.
And what's great about this idea is it's a unifying issue, right? It's not a one side of the political aisle or another side of the political aisle because essentially all public schools are getting hurt by this because the subsidies don't even come close to equalling what's getting taken away in TIF dollars, right? And I think all of us at this table recognize that, you know, one of the reasons property taxes are so high is because there isn't enough money in education and they've pushed that down to the property taxpayers. So I think if, if, as an organization, when I, IASB, maybe we do need to start getting a little tougher on this issue and speaking up.
Are these clear, I think?
Yeah.
So I think you have consensus that you should continue to work on this. As you know, if you choose, you have the choice of one other person to work with us here on the board. So make that choice wisely.
I will talk to maybe that one person and I will also discuss with some outside people and maybe I can bring us something the next time.
All right. Are we good with that? Okay, now move to Ms. Peel. You recommended, amended something on school safety. Do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, well, and mine came because we had a bill from the Senate that states the law enforcement drill must address an active shooter and must be done when students are present. School personnel and students would participate in the drill with law enforcement observing, which I think is the worst idea I've ever seen, to put people through a drill like that and put kids through a drill. There's enough information out there that these can cause enough stress on individuals and, and it's, it's stress inducing. It does not reduce the stress and it's not necessary. So that made me go, okay, maybe there is a statement that we need to start talking about as a association and school boards. You know, we support safety in our schools, but not at the expense of our students' social, emotional wellbeing. And so I was, I looked through our statements. The only thing I really found in there was a statement that is talking about bullying and interactions between students, that we want safe schools in that way. I thought this might be the right time to address this new call that is out there in some states especially. But apparently it wasn't even in our state. So I thought it would, it fall under a belief statement, not actually a resolution for legislation. But IASB believes that schools should provide a safe and secure environment for all students with evidence-based procedures and practices that will ensure the school environment is not. with evidence-based procedures and practices that will ensure the school environment is not disrupted, cause undue emotional stress on students and staff, or create undue financial hardship on school districts. That's just my starting point, but I thought I'd cover those three areas.
I like the way you ordered that because when you first started out, you said, "We, we support student safety, but not at the expense." Change the "but" to an "and."
And.
And, you know, just going back to your comments, I think what you've written there is a great starting point.
Okay.
But as one of the conferences we attended a couple of years ago, change the "but" to an "and", and you may have some more support as well.
Yeah, I'll send it to you. You can play with it.
Okay.
I'll send it to you all and feel free to comment on it. I have not, no, I was kind of waiting to see what happened to that bill. That bill is in Rules Committee in the House right now, so I'm hoping it goes nowhere, but.
Kathy, I will share, because I dug a little bit more about that because a number of the superintendents have talked to our advocacy groups about our concern about the student present piece. And we've been told that doesn't necessarily mean that students have to be, to participate, but they have to be present in the building when everyone else is doing this. I'm not sure the difference there. But that there is, there seems to be quite an appetite to do something down in Springfield relative to student safety. And they haven't done anything yet. And that's why there's this interest in this particular bill.
So I will tell you a quick story. There is a rural district around the Joliet area, it's not Joliet, it's a rural area around there, that did something like this at their high school. Because I know one of the teachers there, that they were sharing this with me. And they made it so realistic. They brought in SWAT teams. They had their guns pulled. They were making noise down hallways. The students were aware this was a drill, but they had to have counselors available afterwards because it traumatized, it was that realistic, it traumatized students that bad. I mean, that's crazy that we're doing that to our kids. But here's my question for you. I like what you said in, in your statement, but how do you define what's reasonable? Because there are probably some rural districts, I'm just going to tell you, there is probably some rural districts that want to make it as realistic as possible and, you know what? If it traumatizes the kids, well, gosh darn it, they need to learn what to do if this does happen, you know? I'm just playing devil's advocate because.
Absolutely, yeah. And I would say that's why I put this as a belief statement. I'm not proposing a specific type of procedure or practices. I'm saying it needs to be evidence-based, best practice. And I would hope, in the end, they leave it up to school districts
Yeah.
to decide what to do. But, and I would hope, school districts would use best practice and procedures.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I'm at with that. Because I, I do see that as being, rural districts are already talking about having their teachers carry guns.
Yeah.
And sometimes those.
I'm sure we'll see that on the.
I, sometimes I understand where they're coming from with it, so.
I like it.
Yeah, I know. I just heard one guy one time, I'm like, you know, there, there was a little bit somewhat logic there, so. Yeah, so I don't know. That's where I was at with this, as a belief statement. It's not asking for legislation.
Right.
But at least this gives our association a place to start in that advocating process. And they, at least they know what we're looking for. We're looking for best practice. We're looking for evidence-based. And not financial hardship on us. And it, it better, you know, not affect our students' social emotional well-being, so.
So I guess you're continuing to work.
Yeah, I'll work. I'll talk to somebody from IASB and see what they have to say.
Thanks, Kathy. And Laurie, I had something from you in terms of voter registration.
Yeah, I, well, I, when you were asking for ideas for resolutions for IASB, I mean, one of the things that I am passionate about is fixing voter apathy and making sure that people are registered to vote. And I was questioning what we do in our schools to support that and whether it's a common practice or just something our great school district does. And I know, Karen, you were going to help look into some things. I don't know if IASB takes any position on this, but I guess I was proposing to, if something doesn't exist, to look at some type of resolution that supports the schools facilitating registration of voters for high school students.
Comments, questions?
I know the League of Women Voters in this area, at least, has those birthday boxes for the students, for the high school students, where on their 18th birthday, they get all that information. That's about as much as I know.
Laurie.
I'm sorry.
No, you, please.
No, I remember during, you know, I, I had that question, if that was part of the government class process, you know, for seniors because I think it is extremely valuable at that time for students just to be aware of what their, their right is and the opportunity to express and, and express that right. And I don't, I don't know whether all students are, are made aware of that. And it seems like that's such a captive time. I would certainly be, be supportive of investigating and trying to see whether that's something that ISAB would be understanding what their position is and if that's something that we might want to put through.
Dr. Sullivan?
Civics is now a mandated course, high school course throughout the state. So I think the information, at least through civics, mandated civics courses are there. And I do know that in the Chicago area and in the city of Chicago, they're very active in terms of voter registration. I don't know about downstate. But we could do some more digging.
So Laurie and I talked about this a little bit. I mean, you know, since the Cold War, since the 50s, our, our students and schools, I like to think have been paying attention to what's going on in, in the country, in the world. But where I, I have a problem with it is I'm not sure that, there are, there are plenty of places for people to register to vote. I'm not sure the school should be one of the places that facilitates that. I, I have no problem with teachers directing students where to go and that type of thing. I just, for whatever reason, I feel like the school should kind of stay hands-off as far as voter registration and let the students go out and do that themselves.
So if we teach civics? I'm just trying to get a handle on.
Too, and I'm not, I'm trying to understand what you're saying too. Are you saying you don't think the district, which is different than students being able to hold registration? And that maybe that's my, for you, Laurie, is clarification. Are you asking the association to support school districts endorsing registration for students, for voting? Or are you saying allowing for the student body to register at schools? Whoever is in charge of that could be upped up to the schools themselves?
So, I mean, I, I don't know even right now what the rules are for registering someone to vote, right? So I guess I was advocating that the, that the IASB would be promoting activities to help get students registered at school. That they would encourage that and that that should be something that we.
And I certainly support students being a part of that. And I'm not sure if districts legally, would that be crossing some weird thing? That's, you know, so I, I think we run into problems when the district does things and it is looked at as politically, of course. Justin, you're the one who.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying this in a political way. I'm like, just get people registered to vote. They can decide whatever they want to do or whatever, but there's no politics involved here. Yeah.
I, I'm not, I don't think that's something the school district should be, a school district should be involved in, is getting people to register. I feel that there are enough places that people can go out and register to vote.
Already doing that, I believe. There's, I mean, certain groups, I think, do come into our schools and.
Yeah, but I think the difference is the groups come into our schools and do it. I, and in a way, this, I, I might agree with you, Mark. It's always fun. Just because the last thing we want is another duty put on to districts, you know, besides educating our students. It's, if it's in the form of educating for your, your role as a citizen, it makes sense. But I, I don't want to be mandated to do it.
And I don't want that either, but I think that the schools, I, I want them to be encouraged to help facilitate, make that easier for students. Like, I don't want to have to have everybody go find the right office or whatever to go register to vote. Like, give them, you know, encourage the schools to invite in whoever helps facilitate that.
Dr. Sullivan, what's happening now in our civics classes as part of that curriculum? Is that?
I will, I will have to check, but I know that we have folks that come in and help students to register. And that's even more, now that kids can register when they're 17, if they're going to be 18 by the time they vote. So I know that the League of Women Voters have helped us with that. I don't know, Louis, if you know, if we've checked in with other groups that have come in. But I even know on the day that, the walkout day, we had kids, somebody helping facilitate kids to register to vote.
So it sounds like within our district, there are some, there are some things that are being facilitated to ensure that our students are aware of their, of their right. But from an IASB standpoint and statewide standpoint, whether that same concern and forethought is there is, is the question that I hear Laurie asking. Maybe it is just a belief statement too, at least.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, you just hear so often about how many people are unregistered, right? And it's like, if you give them more assistance or more encouragement at the, when they're in school and earn that right or whatever, I think it helps solve part of that problem.
I don't think the problem is people register. I think it's people problem, problem people going out to vote. Yeah.
That's part of it, I know. I mean, there's multiple facets here.
So I don't hear any.
There was a, 70% of 18 to 29-year-olds did not vote in 2016. So you're, you're right. Well, yeah. 60% of 30 to 44-year-olds did not vote.
I just, I, I fear the perception that people may have of schools are encouraging students to register to vote.
Wow. That's my response. I don't.
Well, I, because, because I believe it can be looked at as political. I believe it can be looked at as political.
Unless they're not telling them.
And, and for the reason that there are plenty of places to go to register to vote, I can, I can register somebody to vote. You can register somebody to vote.
I'm not going to.
I, I would like Laurie to look into and.
Yeah, I want to continue to work and then we'll get back and may, and see if we got something there.
Okay.
Okay. We good?
Students from Parkland might be able to help you. So I think they've looked into this quickly.
Justin, you have anything to add? But, okay, good. With that, I'm going to move to board update. In your packet, you have a substantial folder from the Lund Council meeting from Friday, April 27, 2018. They talked about a number of bills at that one meeting. About three days later, many of them that were of concern to Lund did not pass, which is good. But a review of all those bills are there. The only other thing that I can say about Lund is that there was a roll call vote among all the districts to change the model of advocacy on part of the due page districts. It passed. We will, I think, continue to be in Lund for at least another year. The Indian Prairie Educational Foundation had their monthly board meeting on May 2. Much of the time was spent on two topics. One, the foundation members. Board members receive preliminary budget information. They're asked to look at that information and provide feedback in order that a budget can be approved for the 2018-19 school year. And there was also a lot of discussion about the Team IPEF kickoff breakfast. Again, 500 members, 500 staff members and community members signed up for the race to support IPEF. On May 5, there was about 150 people there at breakfast, getting ready and all jazzed up to run either a 5K or a half marathon. Dr. Sullivan will be donning the yellow jersey and doing her best. Again, I like to reinforce that the Fine Arts Festival is May 19 at Niqua, Matia and Wobonzi Valley High School. Then on April 28, Sue Demming, Laurie Donahue, myself participated in an IASB equity event. And one of the topics during that time in terms of the equity and the, and the discussion was the urgency of now. One of the things they made, one of the things that I learned from this is they made a distinction between the words diversity, cultural competency, and equity and social justice. And said they're really not interchangeable and it's not really developmental. So diversity is kind of like team building and community building. Cultural competency is skill development. The culture is not race. That kind of makes sense. And equity and social justice, I really kind of like how they said it's how people are read and treated and how you respond to that. So I thought that was, was a good, it was a whole-day conference on a Saturday, but it was well-spent. I don't know, Susan or Laurie, if you have anything to add?
I think you covered it. Dr. Sullivan attended also.
Yes. Sorry about that.
It was worth your day.
Yeah, it was, it was well worth the time, yeah.
What's that?
I just said it was well worth the, the day.
Yeah, it was worth the day. Last but not least, as Janine had stated and Dr. Sullivan, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. I think we have a state-of-the-world staff. I don't think anything beats the staff. Over the course of years that I've been with the district, now is, I guess, going on over 25, I haven't found a better district, better staff. They're creative. They work extra. They work nights in order to benefit our kids. And so to all our teachers and also everyone who works with our kids. I want to thank our teachers. I want to thank our teacher assistants, all our support staff. I want to thank our custodians. I want to thank anyone who works with our kids because they do make a difference. This district is not world-class just because of the great boards that we have here. It really is on the shoulders and the hands of our teachers and staff. So thank you so much for what you do. I hope on behalf of the board, we express our appreciation to all of you. Hope you have a good week and hopefully the parents always treat you well during that week. So thank you for all you do. With that.
Need to reconvene.
I need a motion to reconvene into executive session.
So move.
I will make a motion to reconvene into executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of a public body, legal counsel for the public body, and community hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine validity of litigation when an action against a faculty or behalf of a particular public body has been filed as pending before a court or ministerate tribunal or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the filing shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting, collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salaries, schedules for one or more classes of employees, replacement of individual students in special education programs, and other matters relating to. other matters relating to individual students.
I have, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? I guess Jackie called a roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
We are recessed into executive session. I ask that you turn in your evaluation sheets now, please, before we go.